I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask me Eric to.
Thank you. It's good to be with you tonight. I'd like to read a scripture to start us out with. Philippians 4:6, it says, "Do not be anxious about anything, but in everything, by prayer and supplication with thanksgiving let your requests be made known to God." Those are good words to live by. Lord, as we invite your presence into the midst of this meeting, we give you all that we are this day. Brush away our weariness so that we may be inspired in our work. Help us to discover new ways to reveal your love to all we meet. Keep our minds clear and focused on all we need to achieve, and give us the wisdom to overcome difficulties and create your minds to find solutions. May your blessing be upon all who acknowledge you as provider and Lord. I thank you for equipping this council with the means to meet the task at hand, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Okay, do I have a, do you have the minutes ahead of you, in front of you? You can add a minute to you. Do I have a motion to accept my minutes as read?
So move.
Second. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. While we're getting that done, Dan, do you have anything to get to us?
Sure. Good evening, County Council. I've made a short report in the commission meeting and just wanted to reiterate the attraction success that we've had with the company called Nova Chemical that is taking a good amount of space in the former Visteon building. They have contracted with a company by the name of Noblex that will produce recycled raw materials, polyethylene pellets, which will be the end product. And we'll hire about 125 people and we'll have better than average wages for the city of Conoverville and for Fay County, around $26 plus an hour. So we're happy about that and wanted to ring the bell one more time. It's been publicized in the paper and word has got around, but I haven't said anything about it. It's a project that I've been working on for about a little less than two years. These attraction projects are not just happen with little effort. There's been a lot that's went into making sure that this company was a good fit for our community and the culture of the company that will be running the plant, Noblex, is that they are, they term themselves not as employees but as family members. There's about 10,000 of them, so that's, that's pretty good. At any rate, I just wanted to let you know that we'll continue to work on other companies that may complement this attraction to Fay County. And we see a pretty bright future for the next couple of years, mainly because of the efforts that the new owners of the 4747 Western Avenue have put into that building. If you've seen the pictures of the new membrane roof over about a million square feet and the interior of the building that has been completely overhauled, painted, new LED lights that are motion sensitive. It's really, it's like a new building. It's going to end up blessing our community for a long time in the future. So I want to just bring that to your attention and ask you to continue to support economic development. We depend upon the county, as you know, for a good portion of our funding. And it's these types of projects, as well as the others that we've done over the years, that will help us succeed going forward. So I certainly appreciate the county. Any questions for me, County Council?
Dan, could I ask you a couple?
Sure.
Just remind me, how much space are they going to take up in the Visteon building?
I've heard a couple different, I've heard 400,000 square feet, I've heard 700,000 square feet. I'm not, I'm not exactly, it's somewhere between that.
Okay, all right. Well, yeah, probably closer to four. What's the, what's their projected investment? I mean, they'll have to put that on their CF1 form, right?
I've heard a couple of figures on that, too. Let me give you that, and I'll be glad to give it to you.
Appreciate it.
I can do some digging and find it out.
But the, sorry, but the state's pumping in some, some training dollars, right?
The state absolutely is putting a big chunk. IEDC, Indiana Economic Development Corporation, is a partner with our city government that's put a pretty good abatement into play. And with Indiana Eds dollars, it's, they're certainly an incentive for them to come to our community.
Dan, what will they be doing up there? What kind of work?
Well, Wes has been explaining to me that they will take plastic that is recyclable. They'll be washing it, particleizing it, chopping it, and then they will pelletize it into a closed system. One of the questions that come up on the internet was, oh, we're going to have fumes and burning plastic and so forth and so on. All this will be in a contained system that will, will not threaten the environment whatsoever, or employees in the plant. So it's a mechanical particleization and then pelletizing those particles and then created and washed.
And those pellets would be used for what, packing material, things like that?
Those pellets be used right, right back into manufacturing. This company, their sister company down in North Burn, Indiana, I believe, has, if I'm not mistaken, they, they create a lot of the plastic bags that you see in all the big box stores. So there's a huge
I've been there, I know where you're from.
The materials that they're producing worldwide.
They weren't over being in before, were they?
No.
Okay.
Oh, no.
Okay.
Don't confuse those two.
Okay.
This is a well-funded, very, well, successful company.
Dan, of course, recently we just had the big problem with Richmond, the company restored that. I think that's why they left their vehicles inside the plant. There would be that to protect.
I don't know what their method of operating is. I do know that there's a, at the day, an inspected sprinkler system inside the building that will, you know, heaven forbid, something happens. They've got some safety options in play there to help in something like this.
We'll need that.
No.
Okay. How soon are they coming online, you know?
You know, I don't know that. I did know there's a lot of equipment that has to come in. There's a huge build-out that's going to happen. Don't know the timing. Like I said, we've worked on this a long time. And it's getting, wherever we're at now, we're very happy about it. And the community will play along. I think we're going to be real happy in the end.
They're expected to be ramped up by '26, correct?
If not before, yes.
Are there other businesses in that building or coming in? I mean, is this still space?
There will be additional space.
Okay.
So it's certainly possible.
Good job, Dan. Thank you.
Thank you, County Council.
Do we have anything, any mail? Does our county attorney have anything to tell us?
Not tonight.
Nothing profound?
Nothing profound.
Okay. We'll pass you this time, okay? Any committed reports?
Hey, the budget committee had a hard time getting together, coming, coming to an agreement on a date to get together this week. But I think the quorum's going to get together on Thursday and Friday. I'm not going to be able to make it. Kay and Tim will take a look at it. They'll have, they'll have a report for you, I guess.
Just do some feedback and let us know what's going on. Appreciate that. Okay, thank you. Do we have a commissioner here today? To give us a report?
You don't need a report, you can be.
I want everything you've got in your head. Well, wait a minute. No, just what you worked on today, okay?
Well, we won't go that far.
Okay.
Okay. We had a relatively short meeting today. It didn't last too long. Among the few things that we did, we did approve the quarterly claims for public transit for senior center. We approved the establishment of the EMA volunteer teams for our EMA director, Wade Walling. And this is going to be similar to a resurrection of the old civil defense, a little bit different, but he's handling that. His predecessor, we found out, used to be the ADA compliance coordinator and the Title IV Civil Rights Coordinator for the county. And we had never passed that assignment on to anyone else. Luckily Wade said that he would be happy to assume that duty. So we gave him those two additional responsibilities today. And we also received the report for the coming year's grant awards and audit letters for community corrections from Michelle Dudley today. And we also received six proposals for the next bridge inspection in the county, countywide bridge inspection. So we've got six proposals from these companies, engineering firms, and we'll go through the process in the next few weeks, choosing someone to do that for us next round. We also approved, gave approval to Fay County Ministerial Association to conduct a prayer vigil and special service on the lawn out front on September the 11th. This is going to be a 9/11 service they're going to have this year. That'll be September the 11th at noon. In the regular routine business, we did approve a, our contract with Malcon that does work for the auditor's office. And we also approved the placement of a new brochure rack that the Fay County Tourist Bureau bought for the courthouse. It's sitting out here in the carton right now. As soon as we get it unpacked and put together, we'll have a new brochure rack outside the door here for those that, that want them. Ooh, and that, that's about it.
You said there's about six bridge projects you're looking at?
No, there's six engineering firms that turned in proposals to do our next bridge inspection.
Bridge inspections, okay, I'm sorry. I know we've had some budget restraints on highway department and things. How many bridges are we possibly looking at we're going to be able to work with this year? Do you know?
Well, we've got one active project. I can't remember the name of that bridge or the number of it, out here north of Conoverville.
Oh.
But at any given time, we've got probably no less than four or five bridges that are on the replacement list. And without state and federal help, we would never get these bridges built. Because our bridge fund, as you know, is funded by a small slice, a very small slice of our tax levy, property tax levy. And the only way you can increase that tax levy for the bridge fund is to reduce the levy for the general fund or some other fund. So, you know, that's.
Six and one and a half dozen the other, right?
Yeah, it's tough. So without the federal and state help, we'd, we'd be in sad shape with bridges.
Yep. Right. Okay. Any other questions? Good job, Neil. Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks.
Moving on to whole business, reminder of budget hearings August 8th and 9th here at the courthouse, nine o'clock in the morning. Got a lot of work to do this year. And Jessica, you here to talk about the tax payment?
Jelisa?
Tax abatement compliance program, please?
She's not going to be able to be here.
Okay.
But this was sent out to everybody ahead of time.
Okay. The county is estimating about a granted tax abatement mandate based on information to the property so high as to comply with the statement. County council deems that the following companies have admitted to comply with prior statement benefits approved by this council. Have we already voted on this?
No, we tabled it at the last meeting.
Okay.
She was here at the last meeting, but just, and this communication, since I wasn't here, that wasn't brought, the actual form wasn't brought, but she explained it. And they are in compliance.
They're in compliance?
Yes.
And that abatement, how long have they wanted the abatement for, do you remember? It's all part?
I would say five years.
Five-year abatement?
Don't let me do that.
And that will be on the improvements they're planning, right?
Yes.
Not on what's existing at this time?
Well, it's on the improvements they've already made.
Okay. Just the improvements they've made, okay. Okay, she wants a tax abatement for improvement they've already done on the family farm supply. Do I have any questions? I can't answer them, but if you want to ask them, I'll listen to them. Do I have a motion to accept this?
I happened to take a look at the CF1 form. They, you know, according to the tax abatement committee, they checked the records. It did, they did meet it. It was to, their investment was to help retain 22 jobs and create 26, or, excuse me, create four, for a total of 26. And, you know, the committee has a process that they go through, and Jelisa is on that committee and is just reporting back that they, that what they said they would do. So I'll make a motion, we accept it.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, a second to accept the abatement. Any more questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's passed. Okay, now we're going down to, we have no new business to talk about. Additional appropriation request for opioid restricted fund 1237, account 30860, grant match $46,000. Account 30303, other services, 6468780. You want to explain that, Shane?
We're just requesting permission to spend the opioid money that we got through the lawsuit that the county filed against opioid manufacturers. We're opted into the state settlement agreement, and we're going to get so much money per year. So this is money that we've already received
Okay.
To be.
Take them each one, each one individually?
Don't have to. You can vote for one at once.
Okay, let's go to the next one. Let's vote them all at one time. Additional appropriation request for opioid unrestricted fund 1238, account 30303, other services, $19,912. Additional appropriation request for misdemeanor fund, and that, that's, sorry, stop right there, that's it. So, well, the opioid funding, funding's already in place. Do I have a motion to accept it? Any discussion?
I'll make a motion that we, we pass the additional appropriation request for opioid restricted fund 1237, to account 30860, grant match, and 30303, other services for $46,000 and $64,000, 68780, respectively. I just want to do the 1237 and 12, both the 1237 at this point. My motion's just for the first two.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, and a, to grant that, release that money for opioid fund. Any further questions? Discussion? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, do everyone from the jail here?
Zach.
Zach? We got, we got a couple dollars we can give you, about to help.
I hope you guys do. I just got a text message from Josh Darbo. Dale, you'll like this. Our condenser in our freezer in the, in the jail just went out, and he's got somebody looking for a new one right now. So fantastic news.
We'll see you next year on that one.
I just got that, yeah. Just got that text message. So hopefully we can get something quick and save some of the food that's in there. But we'll do that for that one next time, I guess. What we're asking for now, I'm not sure what in the world they were thinking last year. They asked for an amount for our food budget. They asked for the same amount that we got the first year we were Tiger Foods. And I don't know if we asked for the new amount that we needed, or if the council just said, no, this is what you got last year, so this is what you're getting. I'm not sure what happened. But we're running out of money in our food budget because, just like everybody else, when you go to the grocery store, your food budget is about double. This isn't because we switched to the new company. This new company will save us money, but the prices of Tiger increased last year around August. Joey signed that. And then, for some reason, asked for the same amount of money last year. So we're almost out of food money already. So we have decided to try to ask for an additional appropriation to start, to start us off. $12,000 out of the misdemeanor fund. That can only be used for things that go on in the jail. So it looks like we have 37, almost 38,000 in it now. This will get us through the month. And then I think we get another lump sum from the state for the misdemeanor fund again in August. So if we have to, we can take some money out of that. But eventually, we're going to have to get some money, probably county general, I would assume, because we don't have any fat in our budget. We've looked to try to take it from somewhere else. The misdemeanor fund is something that we, we can use for this. So, again, I don't know what happened, but we have 180,000 appropriated for our food budget, and we went through it already. So, and our average daily population has been a little higher than it was last year, but not that high. We should have ran out of money. Again, we were going, I think, the budget has stayed the same for the three years we've been with Tiger, and it should have gradually increased, and it didn't for some reason. So.
So you've already used all your budget so far up until August 1st?
It's August 1st, yes.
By the cost of food, definitely. I mean, has doubled.
Yeah. And again, they tried to, Tiger tried to increase it again in January, and I refused to sign it because our contract said every August they can increase it.
Right.
They tried to slide one by me, and I wouldn't sign it. So it was a little, I mean, it could have been higher, but it is what it is. I mean, we've got a contract with, this was with Tiger, this is, this is to pay the new company, Tigs. The bills have been about the same. But again, August, Tiger was going to increase their prices again, so it was going to be higher. And Tigs is going to save us money. January 1st, we're saving a nickel or a mill because I'm going with them on the commissary, and they're going to give us a discount. But again, the price of everything has went to the roof.
The option is letting them serve it, that's right.
That we could do that.
No, I'm requesting it.
Yeah, we, we could, but the lawsuit may be a little more.
You're right, you're right, sir.
And they're not getting steak and lobster over there. They're, they're getting the bare minimum. They're getting what they need. But it's all costs. So again, 12,000 out of the misdemeanor fund. Again, it can only be used for things that go on in the jail.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept. Second.
A motion, a second, to accept $12,000. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay.
All right. Also, some information on the vehicle that was towed at Walmart, one of the deputy's trucks. We finally got the quote from the insurance. The commissioners accepted it. I think we're going to get $14,000, close to $14,000 out of the vehicle. So my plan is to buy a used vehicle, put my chief deputy in that, and then put his truck out on the road. It's, we need trucks on the road for our road deputies so they can get where they need to get in the county. So I got the permission from the commissioners to do that today, so.
And this, the, the freezer thing over there is, well, we'll be talking to you next Monday or Tuesday about any additional funding you need.
Yeah, that's not good news. I mean, that's, again, old facility, I mean, that, we got locks going out, the air handlers, the situation. I mean, it's just an old building that's 24/7 used. So I guess we got our money out of it, but I hate to hear that our freezer went out. I know it was hurting earlier today, and Josh said it finally went out. So he's got Hudson Mechanical working at it. And they're trying to find a, a used part for it, so try to save us some money, but.
Appreciate that.
We'll see.
Thank you, Zach.
All right. Any questions or anything?
Okay, we have a transfer request with county general fund commissioners from account 10230, group health insurance to 30310 insurance billing and property for $50,59333. That's just a transfer of funds, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's already budgeted, just transferring it?
Make a motion that we transfer the requested amount from account 10230 to account 30310.
I'll second it.
And a motion, second it, to accept that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, good. Transfer request courthouse operating fund 4903 from account 30102 maintenance to 20285 repairing maintenance supplies, $5,000. It's a transfer request. It's already budgeted.
I'll make a motion to transfer 10102 to 20285.
I will second. Okay. Made a second it to accept that operating expense. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Transfer request courthouse operating fund 4903 from account 30102 maintenance to 20920290, other supplies, $1,000. You had a transfer request for $1,000.
That's the cheapest one yet. I'll make the motion to transfer 30102 to 20290.
I'll second. Okay. Made a second it to accept the $1,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And a transfer request county general fund 1,000 probation from account 30200 to traction. And a transfer request county general fund 1,000 probation from account 30200 to contractual services to 10123 probation officer, $24,950. Again, a transfer of funds. Already budgeted money?
Yes.
Okay.
We transferred.
Transferred.
This kind of relates to Lawrence Smith's untimely passing. Like, we transferred money to contractual services and hired an attorney to come back and clear up some of his cases until we get hired someone. Well, we got somebody hired much quicker than we thought, and so we were transferring the money back into that salary line.
Okay, so it's nothing out general?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, it's general, but it's not even.
It's already budgeted, okay.
Yes, nothing new.
Do I have a motion to accept that?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any 144s?
Hey, Bob, we still have the additional appropriation request for the unrestricted opioid funds. My motion is just the restricted.
Okay, when you said the two, I thought you meant the two funds. I didn't realize you just meant the first two accounts.
I just meant, yeah, I just meant the first two.
Because I took those minutes wrong, and Jeff, you were correct, I'm sorry. Why do I doubt you?
Can you repeat that?
Jeff was right.
Could, could, the, the 19,000, what, what's that going for, in the unrestricted funds? Can you tell me that, Dale? Remember?
19,000 of the unrestricted?
Yeah.
Going to the Hope Center?
Oh, is it? Okay.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, I didn't drill up. You did say just the one, that's okay.
That's fine, that's fine. I'll make, I'll make the motion, we, we pass the additional appropriation on the opioid unrestricted fund to account 30303.
Second.
Okay, made a second it. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Is there any further business to bring before the council?
Aye.
I think we can adjourn, so I want to.
I'll make a motion.
I want to order coffee.
Second.
Okay. Made a second it, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You stick around.
Yes.